Hi, I'm Mary Wing Soers and this is another episode of It's Your Choice. Today, I had invited the school board candidates to come on. Unfortunately, Bob Slater is out of town. He's one of the three people running for the two seats that are available. Greg DePass wasn't able to be here, but we do have Amy Finnemore, who has put her hat into the ring. And so I'm excited that you will have an opportunity to get to know Amy. Thank you for joining us today, Amy.
Thank you for having me.
You are a ten-year resident in our town?
Yep.
So tell me why it is that you want to run for the school board?
Yeah, thank you. So there's two different reasons why I'm looking to run for school board. One of them is my background is in higher education administration and economic development. So I work at a local college in Manchester, and I work as a program manager, which involves a lot of program evaluation. So I look at it, and the first thing you do is you look at the mission of the university. So you say like-
So we can say specifically that you work at SNU, correct?
Yes, I do.
Southern New Hampshire University?
I do work at Southern New Hampshire University. So what you do in program evaluation is you look at the mission of your university, and then you look at, so my job is program manager, and I look at the programs and I say, are our programs helping to achieve our mission? So you look at different data points. There's pretty standard data points in higher education that one uses to evaluate programs, but what I do is actually take a step further back. And I really say, are these the right metrics that we want to be using? Are we understanding and interpreting the data correctly? And is this data the right data that we want? Are we really understanding our programs very holistically? So that we can really say, yes, this program or this offering is helping to achieve our mission.
So recently at the school board meetings, Dan Black, who is the Assistant Superintendent, has been coming forward with an awful lot of data that he is presenting to PSATs, IRETT testing, even on behaviors that we see in the school. So you would be the person that would want to take that and really delve into it, is what you're saying?
I would love to do that. So one of my favorite things about working in program evaluation is not only taking this data, this standardized testing data, this behavior data, all of these different, even demographic data. The school district is really starting the conversation around full-day kindergarten. A really substantial piece of that is really projecting out birth trends and saying, is there actually long-term going to be the demand for full-day kindergarten? And we really need to look at that from a data-driven perspective to make sure that we're making informed choices. So with that, when I was saying one of my favorite pieces of program evaluation is talking to stakeholders. So what I like to do is I learn about the problem or the question that is being asked. And once I feel like I have an understanding of it, before I have a hypothesis, before I have a solution, I actually go to the stakeholders and I'll say, alright, so tell me about the PSATs in Londonderry. What are the students experiencing? What is the prep like? Are all students, is this a class that they're taking? Is this something that they're doing after school? Like walk me through this as the teacher, or as the administrator, or as a student even. What is that experience like? And then if you're looking, presumably you would be looking to increase the PSAT scores. Then you can say, okay, what can we do? And you really want to get stakeholders involved. The stakeholders would be teachers, parents, students, the school administration, the school board. And it's really a community, and they come together and they say, okay, this is the problem, and then this is what we know about it, and we work together to come up with a solution.
So you had said two reasons. The first reason being that you really want to delve into all that data.
I do.
What's the second reason?
The second reason has to also do with the mission of the school system itself. So recently, a report came out from Reaching Higher New Hampshire, and it was this fantastic, it had all this amazing data.
You seem like a very happy person when you have a lot of data.
I was really happy when I found that. And so one piece of data that really stuck out to me, I care a lot about equity in higher education. And in order to have equity in higher education, you have to have equity in K-12, or else you won't get to higher education. The future requires for someone to succeed in the job market in the future, they have to have higher education. And so success in K-12 is really pivotal there. So I really care a lot about equity in the early years, which will really help position students for success later on. So the Reaching Higher report pulled data from the entire state of New Hampshire, including Londonderry, and it looked at reading and math proficiency scores from the annual standardized assessment in grades four, eight, and 11.
And that's a state assessment?
It is, a state assessment. And children who are eligible for free or reduced lunch in Londonderry and statewide have math and reading proficiency levels that are a fraction of the reading and proficiency levels of students who are not eligible for free or reduced lunch. There are a lot of external environmental factors that would impact this. But what I would like to do is really talk to teachers and understand what is going on in their classroom, and how can we really help make sure that we're bridging that equity gap? So that we have all students performing at the same level.
So do you have any ideas on how we might be able to bridge that gap?
I would actually try to hold off on that because I would want to hear from the teachers. The teachers in the classroom, they're the experts. They know, they see these students every single day, they know them. They care about them, they want them to succeed. And so for me, I would want to start with the teachers and the administrators, the parents, the students, and really say, let's work together. And everyone, I would have to imagine, would have the same goal of helping all students succeed.
So we recognize that those tests are just one day in the life of the student.
They are.
So it would be valid then to also look at other data points?
Absolutely.
You know, in conjunction with that?
Yep, and that's a great point. If you didn't get a good night's sleep, maybe you were up really late studying for that test, maybe you were nervous, maybe you weren't feeling well, you're not going to perform that well on a test. I'm personally not a huge fan of standardized assessments, and especially single-point-in-time assessments. So what you can do is really look at the overall performance. So if you start with the teachers, and you say, okay, tell me about the performance, what are students doing in math and reading? And you can really, and you really go from there, and you can say, is this difference in the standardized assessment score, is it really accurately reflective of differences that students are demonstrating across their academic experience? Or is it just a reflection of one test that they didn't do well on?
Right, so I'm glad you're able to make that distinction.
Oh, thank you.
So, let's find out a little bit more about you personally. You're married and you have a couple of children?
I do, yep. I've been married almost 10 years. October 2020 will be 10 years for me. And so my husband and I moved here 10 years ago. And we have two children. We have a six-year-old who is in first grade in North School. And we have a four-year-old who is in pre-K at Leap in Moose Hill.
So, looking at our town, you made the decision to join, to run for the school board. Why specifically the school board? Why not any of the other boards in town, do you think?
Well, that's a good question. For me, I really care about education. And I look at my own children, and I think, my husband and I have full-time jobs. They have a stable work schedule. Not everyone who works full-time actually has a stable work schedule. We work the same hours every single day, Monday to Friday. Some people might work Tuesday to Saturday, or their schedule may change week to week. And then that presents a host of other challenges. So we're really lucky to have stable work schedules. We have ample paid time off. If it snows, we just work from home. So we're really lucky. And I look at that, and I think about our children. And we're reading to them, we're doing math homework, we're doing spelling, we're sitting with them, my first grader, we sit with him every single night, and we do his homework with him. So, you know, we read the instructions, and then I'll say, okay, you know, I read the instructions, and I say, what is this page telling you to do? Now you walk me through it. And it really helps develop his critical thinking and his comprehension skills. And I think if you're working 2 to 10, if you're working second shift, you can't sit with your child after school. And I feel like, I feel like we're so blessed that I want to be on the school board so that I can make sure that all children have these opportunities.
So given the fact that there are people that have those types of schedules, what might you suggest that the school could do to help? Do you have any ideas yet, or do you want to wait till you get there and see what the deal is?
So there's a lot of different ideas. You could offer extra help during the day. You could have some type of study hall during the day. They could stay in during recess and work with teachers. You could have extra help after school. That presents different logistical challenges with transportation home, or if the child has activities or obligations outside of school or after school. So there are ideas that I have. But I do really try to be cognizant that I'm not forcing my idea, that my idea isn't the right idea. My idea could be the totally wrong idea.
One of the things that you mentioned was full-day kindergarten. Right now, we're having the conversation of whether or not we have space for the students that we have right now in a half-day program, which in fact, we don't because we have portables that we've put up. Next year, the expectation is that they may have to have another portable because of the increase in the numbers of students that are coming in, or they'll have, you know, larger classes. Have you had a chance to look at that situation? And do you have an opinion about full-day kindergarten as opposed to half-day? Would you like to see kindergarten be full-day?
I do. I certainly have some thoughts on full-day. And it's, I think theoretically, a very interesting concept to think about because Londonderry, there are many districts in the state that offer full-day kindergarten. When you have half-day kindergarten, it really presents a lot of logistical challenges for parents to get their child to and from half-day kindergarten. Even with the bus transportation to and from, a parent still has to be there to get their child on and off the bus. The other option is to send them to one of the daycares in town that provides the transportation to and from. So there's just a lot of challenges for working parents around half-day kindergarten. You can look at property values of towns that offer full-day kindergarten. So even if you don't have children in the school system, the value of your house is not only reflective of your house and your piece of land that you have, it reflects the community that you live in, the school system has an influence in the value of your house. So there are, even for residents who don't have children in the school system or wouldn't have children in kindergarten, there's still benefits to having full-day kindergarten for the district. That being said, you also really need to be cognizant of the kindergarten options throughout the town. And then you have to look at the long-term birth demographics and would say, is there really a sustained need here in this community, given the birth trends?
All back to that data.
Yes.
One of the propositions that came before the school board this year was that we have one-to-one devices at the high school for this incoming freshman class. So we would provide them with a device that they would own over the four years that they were in the school, and probably beyond, because we know how quickly technology changes. So this would be something that would have to be built into the budget. Already is built into the budget because of the replacement cycle that we have for devices. How do you feel about technology in the schools?
I am really torn about technology in the schools. My husband and I have frequent conversations about what is the right amount of technology for your child. So at four and six, for us, the answer is very little technology. And even for older children, I was at, for anyone who's familiar with the Regional Accrediter for School Systems, in K-12 public school, NIAS, it's the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, accredits K-12. And then it's sort of within it, it's called NETI, and it's the New England Commission for Higher Education accredits colleges. So I was able to go to the NETI conference, and they had this phenomenal keynote speaker who talked about, once smartphones hit market saturation, teenagers started having increased depression, increased, a lot of really negative ramifications that coincided with market saturation of smartphones. We don't know yet the longitude and all the long-term impacts of technology on the development of very young children. There is emerging research that technology in the classroom does not lead to the gains in outcomes that we actually think that it does. So what I would do for this particular proposition is really take a step back and say, what are we trying to achieve by introducing technology into the classroom? And there's this really fine line because you cannot have children graduating high school who don't know how to use these devices, don't know the power of these devices. We need children who are going to know how to code. They're going to need to know how a computer functions. Even if they're not a computer programmer, jobs in the future are going to need technology skills and data literacy skills. They're going to need to know these things, even if they're not creating computer programs. So there's that real need. But then to actually have a student doing their coursework on it, I don't have enough data and enough research on it yet to really say, I can actually make a really informed judgment on it.
So one of the benefits the school district, I think, believes would have, if every child had their own computer, they would no longer need their smartphones. So when they walk in the door, they would, you know, put their smartphones in a bank, you know, or a jail. And they would not have them for that time period. They would be utilizing their device, which is school district-owned, well, not owned, but managed. So that they wouldn't be able to download, for example, games or things that are not educationally appropriate onto them. And they would be utilizing them specifically for whatever class they happen to be in, taking notes, or creating documents, or doing prezees, or any kind of presentations that they might have to do. I understand, and I agree with you 100% that we do not need smartphones in the school district. You know, we came up with a bring-your-own-device policy for a while because we did not have enough devices for every child to have the ability to do it. And I think that the teachers have been looking at, how can I utilize this device to better my curriculum? Not how can this curriculum better the device? You know what I mean? I don't think they're being, I think they're being proactive with coming up with some things, how it can be used effectively, as opposed to just having the ability to use it, if I'm making sense.
Yep, you are.
So I think, I appreciate what you're saying, and I love the fact that you want to take the time to really delve into this and see what's going to happen as far as future concerns are. So definitely not something that you would want to see in elementary school, or even perhaps middle school, but how do you feel about knowing that they're only four years away from their career or college situation, high school?
It does feel more appropriate for the high school learner, especially if a student goes to college, if they go face-to-face, or if they go to an online institution. A lot of colleges still use what's called a learning management system. So that is when the student, even in a face-to-face traditional, like when you think about college, the student is sitting in the classroom. When they go to submit their papers, they actually upload them into this learning management system. And for those types of reasons, it's really, I do agree that it's important for a student to really understand what is this learning management system. A lot of them have extra resources. So if a student is like, oh, I don't really understand this concept, or I need to, I want to take some practice tests to really make sure I can reinforce and develop my skills, those resources are generally within the LMS, the learning management system. So at the high school level, it does certainly feel a little bit more appropriate. But I don't know that I really have a fully-formed opinion on it yet.
And I don't think the school board does either. I think they're still looking for answers as far as, and I think that they will be seeing, you know, they'll be giving additional presentations over March and April and June before. And again, it also depends on whether or not the budget passes. So how do you feel about a $78 million budget for the town, for the school, I mean?
It's a lot of money. It is. And how do I feel about it?
I mean, have you had a chance to look at the budget? Did you follow the meetings?
I did, I did. And, I mean, so for me personally, it's important that students in the school system have the resources that they need to support student success.
That's the bottom line?
That is the bottom line to me. That being said, if I were on school board, if I get a seat on school board, what I would like to do is really make sure that I understand if there are any efficiency, like the effectiveness of the budget. Are we, like, what is the goal? So you can actually take a step back again and say, this is the mission of the school district. So what are we trying to do? And are the budgetary priorities aligned to that mission? And if they're not, then let's actually take a step back and think about, what do we need to do to make sure that we're supporting the mission?
So you know what our mission is, and you've seen the budget. Was there anything in the budget that you didn't feel was aligned with our mission? Tough question.
It is a tough question. Not that it wasn't aligned, no.
Okay. All right.
No.
I know it's difficult to answer, not having been on the school board itself and being at those meetings, but... So you said that you read all of the minutes of the meetings. Did you ever, and you watched some of the meetings?
Yep, I watched some of them. I actually did not know, so I appreciate you telling me that I could stream them. That was really helpful to actually watch them, prior to that I was reading the minutes.
Okay, all right. So, is there anything else you want to tell us about yourself that would help us make a decision as to why we should vote for you on March 10th?
Oh, that's a heavy question. What else can I tell you about myself that would help you make a decision to vote for me? I care a lot about the state of, not only the current state of education, but making sure that from a curriculum and assessment perspective that our students are primed to succeed long-term. That K-12 provides them with a strong foundation to go on in whatever it is that they decide to do in their adult life, that they're primed for success.
So currently, we have, we're moving towards a standards-based assessment, and all of the schools are creating competencies. And you know, if your child is in first grade, that when their report card comes home, it's on a 1, 2, 3, 4. And there are no ABs and Cs and Ds anymore. At the high school, at the middle school, I mean, at the elementary school, at the middle school, they were going to start that four-point scale, like a year and a half ago, when those learners that came up from the elementary school came to the high school, I mean, to the middle school there, that first year, we were supposed to go 1, 2, 3, 4, and it didn't happen. We got a lot of pushback from parents. We weren't ready as far as our competencies were concerned, and as far as being able to explain it to people. So we still do have that AB, I mean, that, you know, that ABC scale. But we also do have a 1, 2, 3, 4 scale for self-direction, which is what we expect children to complete their homework, that we get a self-direction, 1, 2, 3, or 4. How do you feel about not having, and you're in higher education, so you know that these kiddos that come from the high school are working towards having a really high GPA? What would happen if we never had GPAs anymore, if we were on a 1, 2, 3, 4 scale?
Yep, so that's a great question. I am pretty familiar at the higher education level with competencies. I personally like competencies because you can actually say, this is the competency. Make a cup of coffee can be a competency. So you can be 1, which is not quite at the threshold. 2 is almost-
So 1 is just putting the coffee in the cup, not putting the water. 2 is putting the coffee and the water in the cup.
Yep.
3 is remembering to heat the water first.
Yeah, thank you for going-
And 4 is asking, does somebody like milk or sugar in their coffee?
Yeah, great example, thank you. So you could be at any of these four proficiency levels with making coffee. And what I like about it is, once you either are at a 3 or a 4, which is you meet expectations or you exceed expectations, it means that you have demonstrated that you can make coffee, or you can make coffee really, really well, which is the 4. So once you can demonstrate that you can do that, that now says, hey, I've done this, I don't have to do it again. Maybe, maybe I can make, and then there's different levels of competencies. So I can make coffee really well at home, but would I be able to be a server in a restaurant and continue having a high level of good coffee? So that's called leveling. So like you have a first-grade level of, you know, you color within the lines, but then at a fourth-grade level, at an eighth-grade level, the expectation becomes higher. So you can have the same competency at different grade levels also, and it means different things. But the underlying behavior is the same. So I really like it because I think that they're easy to understand. They're generally written in like plain language, and it's a concrete skill that a student can actually demonstrate.
So then you'd be all aboard in helping look through these and hone through these competencies that are happening right now?
Oh, I would love to, yep. And you did ask a question about GPAs, and that is, that is a, it is a bit of an outstanding question. Even institutions of higher education that deliver their curriculum on a competency-based model under regional crediting guidelines, they have to convert that competency achievement to a letter grade to actually get a GPA. So that's something that is happening in the higher education landscape. It may be happening in the K-12 landscape as well. But certainly, the GPA question around competencies is a question.
So do you think it takes the motivation away? If somebody knows that they don't have, they're not going to get a grade, they're just going to get a 1, 2, 3, or 4? That you've, do you think that that makes a difference? Do you think that psychologically, the A, the B, the C, you know, because it's been so ingrained in our culture, makes a difference?
I don't know. That's a good question. What does, what would motivate a student?
So I mean, our goal, of course, is for intrinsic motivations, not for extrinsic. And that is an extrinsic thing, you know, an outside motivation. We would love for them to want to learn just because learning is really important. But many, I'm faced with kiddos that say, well, it doesn't count, so I'm not going to do it. You know, I'm not going to get a grade for it, so I'm not going to do it.
And that is, I mean, and you hit that nail on the head with the intrinsic versus extrinsic motivation. One thing that I do like to do, I also, in addition to working full-time, I also teach in the higher education level. And I talk a lot about the skills that a student is going to learn from this course. So even if for them, the course is not a major requirement for their program, and you can say, well, why do I need to take this class? And it's because, let me demonstrate to you why this class is valuable for you in your long-term success. So I try to do that a lot in my own teaching. And for me, it's helping the student understand the why behind why they're doing the particular content that they're doing.
Sounds very interesting and challenging. I would imagine at that level too, if they're walking in the door saying, why do I even need this? You know, so good for you.
Oh, thank you.
Amy, I'd like to give you a chance to, well, actually, I'm going to read from Bob Slater, who couldn't be there, sent me an email, couldn't be here, sent me an email and asked me to read this to you all. He is one of the other two candidates that is running for the two seeds. "I want to thank you for the invitation to be there today with you and the other candidates. Unfortunately, I scheduled a trip-" Unfortunately, I scheduled a trip prior to knowing the date of the interview. I am a citizen of Londonderry for over thirty-four years. I have three children, I have had three children graduate through the Londonderry school systems, and currently have two grandchildren in our schools. One is at Moose Hill, and one is at Matthew Thornton. Since running for the school board position last year, I've continued working with the school board and administration on policies, developing a, a long-term district master plan, advocating for technology improvements, and adding curriculum. I have attended nearly every school board meeting for the last two years. I am a member of the facilities study committee, as well as a member of the C-three committee. I continue to be fully co- uh, committed to making the Londonderry school district one of the best districts in the state. I feel as one of five school board members, I could make an even more of an impact to help improve our great school district for our students, teachers, and community. For more information, please search Bob Slater for School Board on Facebook, or email me at bobslaterforschoolboard@gmail.com. I wish, I wanna wish the other candidates best of luck, and thank them for being involved, and hope everyone comes out to vote on March tenth for the candidate of their choice. Thank you. So, um, just as an aside, Bob has been working with the school district to bring in a program of, a, um, mentoring program, and also a, like a, uh, internship program at the high school level. And it, that should start up this, um, coming year, so it's pretty excited about that. Um, he's been working, pushing for that ten-year master plan. Um, one of the things that you and I are both, are both cognizant of is the fact that the school district do, does need to look long-term to see whether or not things will be sustainable. Whatever we, they decide to do as far as full-day kindergarten, or, um, adding a school district, uh, adding a school somewhere in the bill, in this town, uh, to house whatever students might be coming in by, um, in ten years as the, as the town builds out. Amy, thank you so much for coming. I know it's nerve-wracking to be in front of the cameras, and I appreciate you taking the time to do this with me today. I'd like to give you an opportunity to thank the audience for listening, and also to ask them for their vote.
Oh, thank you. So thank you so much for listening to me today. Um, I was really, I, I'm really appreciative of just having the opportunity to come on. Um, so, so thank you, uh, as well. And, uh, so my name is Amy Finnamore, and, um, I would love to earn your vote on March tenth. Thank you.
Polls are open from six AM until eight PM on March tenth. Please come. We know that you're able to do it 'cause you came out for the, um, the na- national primary that just happened. Eight thousand of you came out, so please, we'd love to see that kinda traffic for our, um, for our local election. We know that, um, the town has a down pat as far as getting people in and out. Lots of comments on Facebook saying, it only took me five minutes, it only took me fifteen minutes, it was so well-organized and orchestrated at getting me in and out, so please come and vote on March tenth. Thank you. This has been Mary Wing Soars, and it is your choice.